First, I'd just like to put it out there that we did have an exec session tonight before this meeting to discuss some personnel issues. And I would like to ask for any announcements we have tonight?
Can I get a B-10? Save the date for Springford Snap Bingo and Basket night Saturday, March 14th. All proceeds from this event will be held fun next year post-prom. Bingo winners include designer bags from Tori Birch, Kate Spade, Michael Kors, and more. In addition to bingo, baskets will be raffled throughout the night. Purchase your tickets for the night at sfsnap.org before they sell out.
Thank you. I love purses. Public to be heard on agenda items only. Okay, thank you. We do have one action item tonight. An overnight trip request for two teachers to accompany qualifying students to the Deca State Comp in Hershey from February 19th to 21st. Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Okay, any comments?
Who's paying for the students?
I believe the students are paying their own way for registration, transportation, lodging, and meals.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We have a presentation this evening from Chief Boyer. He's our Coordinator of Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness and is going to present on Springford's Alice program. Welcome, Chief Boyer.
I have a little head cold, so I'm going to dish this off pretty quickly to Lieutenant Gwen Phillips and Officer Terry Height. We've done a lot of research and study over the last couple of months since I've been here and finding some holes and some tweaking we want to do for our Alice program. So again, after evaluating a lot of different avenues, and thankfully, we've got Terry now who's a trainer as well, we're going to do some certain things differently. So I'll give you Lieutenant Phillips.
Hello, how you guys doing? We have a great program here called Alice. We've been using Alice since 2016. I'm going to explain what Alice is. Alice is an option-based response to a violent critical incident. It is tailorable to student populations as well as building specific variables. Alice provides valuable life skills that increase situational awareness and the ability to respond to events in any public place, not just a school. What Alice stands for is alert, meaning that this is your first inclination that there is something wrong in your building. Lockdown and barricade. Inform. Alice suggests that you contact 911 and also let other people in your building know that there's a danger so they can appropriately react. Counter, which is not just physical fighting, but doing anything you can to defend your life. And for our younger students, it could mean creating noise, distance, distraction to create, make themselves a more difficult target. And evacuate or escape. What is Alice? The objectives of Alice training: We want to understand the need for change from the standard traditional lockdown. Understand the elements of an option-based response. Fostering situational awareness. And this provides knowledge and skills to know when to use various options available. How to fortify and barricade a space to make it a harder target. Distract, disorient, and/or disable an attacker if no other option is viable, and this increases our chances of escape and survival. And safely interact with responding police. Alice successfully generates a situation-based response, not a standard protocol. And this is to stimulate pre-planning and discussion before an actual event.
So in looking at Alice as it's been deployed across the district here in Springford, we, as the chief said, noticed that there were some ways that we could possibly improve it. Just because of the way it was rolled out, it's been a little stagnant, and we're looking to stimulate a little bit of change with that, and we're looking to evolve it and move it forward. So our goals right now are to refocus a more consistent vision of Alice across the district. Just because of the way it was deployed, we find that some different buildings have gone a slightly different direction with it than others. So we want to kind of pull everybody back together on that. And we want to lay the groundwork for an evolution of the program moving forward, specifically two different areas. We want to look at focusing on an age-appropriate response. This isn't a cookie cutter. We can't expect our buildings that have K through four kids to respond to events and situations the same that we expect at high school with high school kids. So we want to focus on age-appropriate response, and we also want to encourage some building-specific considerations. Spring City Elementary School is a completely different building than the high school. I can walk around Spring City Elementary School in 30 seconds. I can't do that here. So once we've done that, we're going to be looking to evolve this program forward so that we can improve some responses all the way across the district. So how are we going to do that? Well, currently, what we're doing is we're doing workshop programs with the staff at, starting with our elementary schools, and working them up. Just a short 30, 45-minute workshop where we talk about the things we just mentioned, refocusing, getting them on board as to what we're going to be doing. We're identifying some specific vulnerabilities in buildings, specifically, at this point, student-occupied areas. Nothing huge, nothing big, but things that we can do to make those areas a little more defensible, a little safer than what they are. Not all our buildings were built with security and safety of our kids from something like this in mind. And we're also going to be training all the Springford police so that everybody's on board with a standard Alice response protocol. Moving forward, what we're going to be looking to do is we're going to restructure our drills to avoid what we call training scars. Basically, what that is, we don't want to be doing a drill that encourages an improper behavior or response, so that when something actually does happen in a critical event, that's what they fall back on. Some of our drills, just because of the nature of the way we have to deal with children outside and keeping them safe, encourages improper behavior, like evacuating out one side of the building and then walking past the entire building to get to a rally point. So we're going to be looking at restructuring our drills to eliminate some of those issues. And we're also going to modify the drill schedule to be more age-specific. So in other words, we're going to be focusing more on what would the likely response to an incident like this be in an elementary school? And that's what we're going to be focusing our drills on versus what could be different in a high school? Are those kids able to respond in a different way? We're going to be focusing our drills with them more towards that. And we're going to be doing staff development directly with the school police so that instead of us training one administrator, they train a team, they train, and so on and so on, it's us interacting directly with them to try to keep everybody on board, try to keep best practices, and ensure consistency across the entire district. And then we're going to be developing some feedback surveys. Let us get some feedback from the staff so we can see any gaps that we're not seeing because we're looking at it from the outside in. And I just want to address a few things because a lot of these programs do fall under criticism right now for some of the things that some districts, some police agencies have done with staff and kids. First off, we will never do an unannounced Alice drill. We will never spring an active shooter drill or a drill of that violent of nature on a school community without telling them it's a drill. Students and staff will know well in advance it's a drill. When it happens, it will be made very clear that it's a drill. Parents are being notified anytime we have a drill that we did a drill, what the drill was, that everybody knew what it was. So there's not going to be any surprises in that area. And those drill announcements, when the drill happens in the school, are going to be made in an age-appropriate fashion. They're usually made by the building administrator. Again, we're not trying to scare anybody because it doesn't need to be done. And we're never going to subject our students or staff to any kind of a simulation or role-playing that's going to be overwhelming or traumatic to them. We're not going to shoot our teachers with pellet guns despite the fact some of our administrators sometimes ask us to. We won't do that. It's not something that's ever going to happen. And that's it.
That was very good, though. It was a nice coverage of the Alice program. There was a drill recently in the high school?
Yes.
And would you measure that as successful? Or your drills routinely, do you measure those against any kind of...
So our most recent drill, I consider, was very successful. What we had was our entire team here to evaluate the drill during. We had briefed our administrators prior to the start of the drill. Our staff and students were aware that the drill was about to happen. After the drill was over, we got some feedback from our officers who were on standby for the drill, and we debriefed our administration team. I then sent out a survey to all staff members via Survey Monkey just to ask if they had any suggestions for improvement or ideas, how we could, you know, change the drill that they would feel would be beneficial to their specific building. I think that's the big part, is we need to get a little bit more feedback from our staff members specifically in each building because their input, we don't always get a chance to hear. So I understand that we get to see on the outside what we see from the hallway, but I want to see what they're looking at in the classroom and just making things a little more cohesive across the district. So our most recent drill was very successful. I'm very pleased with it.
Are any of the borough or township police departments involved with any of our drills?
Yes.
Because again, it's a completely different thing if we have our police force present versus, you know, 15 other organizations.
Right. So standard protocol for us is prior to any drill, we do notify our local law enforcement partners, and they are aware that a drill is happening. They do on occasion show up for our drills because they want to be aware of how we train and what our response protocol is. Part of our reevaluation of the Alice program is including our local law enforcement partners. Once Officer Height has finished going through all of our schools to onboard our staff, we're going to take our onboarding notes from staff and have our officers meet with local law enforcement partners to create a more cohesive plan.
And how many drills do you perform each year?
Well, that varies right now. We are in the process of recreating the drill schedule for the next school year to make sure that we are much more consistent across the board. So it's definitely on a quarterly basis at this point, if not more, depending on which building you're in.
So four times a year approximately?
Approximately.
In every building?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that information and for sharing that with us. Chief Boyer, do you have any final remarks for that, for us, on that?
No, we're just working really hard on this because, again, what I want to stress is that we're trying to make it very age-appropriate and to give kids choices so by the time they get all the way up to the high school, they're already making their own good situational awareness decisions, not just here, but how they get gas, how they walk around. Because you know what ends up happening, they're walking around with their...I get walked into often. So we just want to make them more aware of what's out there and so they're safer and they have a better experience here.
So that's, I think, one more comment, though, that what I picked up on is about how you're making things age-appropriate. And I think that's important, too, because I believe it was earlier this year we had had a little bit of pushback maybe from parents of elementaries that were just a little bit fearful that this was kind of too much. But if you're making it age-appropriate, then you're addressing that need, correct?
Correct. And we're finding out, I mean, Terry's very ferocious-looking, so you send him out, and it's all about how you sell this and get the buy-in. Again, when we speak to staff, that really guides how we're going to approach this with the book and with certain drills. But again, it doesn't have to be a situation where they're going to get scared over anything, and we try to really play it down as much as we can. Now, when we get to eighth, ninth, and up, it's a little different situation. They're a little bit more physically aware of themselves. They understand what the outcome could be, so it gets jacked up a little bit more, but not to the point where we're having to send anybody home because they're upset. And we give them plenty of notice and whatnot. So again, it's those building blocks, so the time they get to be young adults, they're making good decisions.
And you're really sharing a skill set with them so that by the time they get to the higher grades, they're familiar with the program, they know what inappropriate response is, they've been taught that, and, you know...
Right. Well, and again, our fear is, not fear, but concern is that by the time they get up to high school, there may or may not be people around to direct their activity, if you understand what I mean, depending on what the incident is and who's affected by the incident. So we want them to make good individual choices. A lot of things we're finding from the studies from different active shooter events and whatnot is that no one told kids they could leave. No one told kids they didn't have to, like, huddle in hallways and wait for direction, and there's already enough panic to begin with. So our theory is that, you know, we want you to go with what you know instead of what's unknown, and we'll find you after the fact. You're not going to get in trouble for certain actions as long as you take good actions that are thought out. So we're trying to give those building blocks so they make those good decisions when it's the worst possible scenario. It's not an easy task, but again, we're refocusing on how to start, and by the time we get up to they'll have how many years of experience with this, and hopefully it'll give us a better outcome for success.
Well, thank you all very much. Any other comments from the board? Thank you. Okay, moving on to board and committee reports. Linda for Curriculum and Technology?
Okay. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met Monday, February 10th. Call to order was at 7:40 PM. Dr. Murray presented a new dual enrollment opportunity for French IV and French V with a partnership with University of Pittsburgh. Students can earn a transcript and three credits from the University of Pittsburgh for each course. They pay $225 per course to earn that college credit. This opportunity will be effective for 2020, '21 school year. And she's looking into other partnerships, possible partnerships with other classes. Social/Emotional Learning curriculum is being integrated. So Dr. Murray also discussed the implementation of SEL learning competencies, which will be embedded throughout the district curriculum. As this initiative is rolled out, Springford will work to ensure that explicit social/Emotional Learning skills are being connected where appropriate with the curriculum. Professional development will be provided, and the practice will be reviewed and evaluated. Dr. Murray also shared a proposal with the committee for consideration to move forward with planning a fully-integrated Springford Virtual Academy. The plan emphasizes the use of Springford teachers for instruction and would address a variety of needs and extend educational choices for the Springford families. With the support of the committee, the curriculum department will move forward with planning and will bring updates in the future. Heidi Rockland shared that we're awaiting notification from the Department of Education for the PA Smart Grant, so hopefully we'll get the results on that soon. She also showed pictures of the new middle school marching band uniforms, which is on as an actionable item coming up, I think, the next meeting. Those band uniforms will be paid for from Capital Reserve. Mrs. Gardy shared with the committee the social studies curriculum that we're buying or purchasing. They recommended the purchase of Scholastic News for grades K through 2 and Pearson My World Interactive for grades 3 through 5. That curriculum was also budgeted for this year. Finally, there was a review of the AP Capstone databases. Mrs. Gardy shared that the Springford students can get access to Penn State databases at any branch campus, and they just have to show proper identification, and they can have a guest access. Additionally, Mrs. Gardy shared that she looked at similar high schools in the area that provided AP Capstone courses, and Springford students have access to the same or chemisoret databases, so we're offering the same thing. Bob Catalano talked about technology. He shared updates regarding the current status of master service agreements. He also presented a review of the Springford Learning Technology Support Plan, which was outlined, he outlined the distribution of devices through 2027. And within that presentation, he shared that we're currently on pace and on budget to ensure device deployment, so that will include the distribution of Chromebooks next year for students grade 9 through 12. And so we have basically three actionable items for consideration. Approval of the middle school marching band uniforms, $98,000 and change. Approval of the social studies curriculum, I'm sorry, excuse me, and approval of, oh, purchase of, this was another thing that was presented, E91 licenses for the Springford police. This is a one-time cost of $5,000 so that all of the officers can get notified immediately of 9/11 calls. So that was the end of the meeting. The next meeting will be held Monday, March 9th at 7:30 at the district office.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fazini?
One question. The master service agreement, what's the status for that? I mean, we had talked about this in early November, and it seems to be like it's just hanging out there, but the sky was falling when we talked about it in November.
I can certainly provide an update in that regard. The discussions with the vendor are ongoing for a number of reasons, including the fact that information has come to light over the course of discussions that there's a third-party vendor that is utilized by our vendor for purposes of storage of data. And as a result, there are concerns on our end with how that vendor, who we're not in contract with, could be held liable for their mishaps under any agreement they have with our vendor, if that makes any sense whatsoever. So bottom line, with the knowledge over the last, I'd say, five to seven days that our vendor utilizes a third party, there are some additional concerns about the arrangement.
So we know we're close to getting this resolved, in other words.
I would say that as of this point, we're probably at a low point in terms of getting it resolved in light of this new information.
How do we revisit that, then, for somebody else to come in and offer us an idea for this service? Because it's not that we don't need this service.
Okay, so you're going off topic. Right. I mean, I think what you have is something that certainly the administration and in consultation with our office, and then as we need to update the board, balance that issue and potentially open it up for additional discussions as to whether there are other vendors to explore. But let's just say negotiations aren't complete, and let's hope that they recognize that they may need to provide additional protections for us.
So to close it out, what I recommend is that there's an update at the next Curriculum and Technology meeting to the committee so that the direction could be given, either if we're going to, based on that, was we going to continue down that path?
Correct.
Or we're going to, we have to go a different direction.
And Dr. Gooding is very clear that in order to roll out an agreement with the current proposed vendor, he would want it shared at committee first.
Right.
For then consideration at a subsequent work session.
Right.
So in the next two weeks, could that happen? Absolutely. Let's hope so, and if not, then we'll be back to options in the alternative.
Well, I also want to comment that I've already directed Mr. Catalano to begin looking for alternatives.
Okay, thank you for that. Policy, you can see that there are two policies on the agenda for a first read tonight regarding Title I, Comparability of Services and Food Services. A full policy recap will be given at next week's meeting. So, there you go. Okay, I did, I kicked the can down the road. Thank you, thank you. So moving on, I'm going to cover Community Relations. That meeting was chock full of information provided to us by Ms. Crew and Andrew Rothmel. And we talked about, now, that committee, if you all recall, meets bimonthly with extracurriculars, so we had lots of information shared there. We talked about the Pennsboro submissions for this year, of which there are 10 submissions. So that, we'll be looking for those awards that will be coming out, and I'll be able to share more information with you about those awards for those pieces that have been submitted for those awards. The Ramcast podcast is an exciting new venture that's been going on with Ms. Crew and Andrew, and that has been received very well. The committee is looking forward to seeing new growth in this area. And in fact, we're going to be covering some of the board meetings on a bimonthly basis, highlighting the presentations from the night before during those podcasts, the Ramcast podcasts. Also, it's a difficult one to say. We did get an update from Andrew about, an extensive update about RCTV and upcoming projects. We talked about possibly creating a digital trophy case for the music department while working on an athletic trophy case this summer also. So he wants to get that coverage and have that up on RCTV. Ms. Crew provided an extensive update regarding communications and marketing and talked about the digital radio project and that she is working with the Office of Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness, as well as the Technology Department on that product, and more information will be coming out about that. Looking at School Messenger as a replacement for the Remind app, and various faculty members already use this free version of the Remind app. We also talked about the scoreboard sponsorship and a possible change to a digital sponsorship to include the scoreboard and Ramcast, possible discount options to people that are already using the facilities so that we could make it more viable, more viable option. Mr. DeBello came up with a one-year intro price idea to get people up on the board, kind of get them in that way, and Ms. Crew is going to update that advertising information with that change onto the website. We have confirmation from InCommunity that they would like to continue down the road for the 2021 school year, and we'll share more information at the next meeting. The InCommunity, if you remember, is the one print option of sharing information that's going on with Springford that would go out to every Springford resident, and then three digital copies. So even if someone doesn't have access to internet, they would at least get a touch once a year with that InCommunity print paper, piece. The other piece that we talked about was Screenagers, which is a film that talks about screen time in teenagers. There's, and Erin Crew, you can maybe help me with that a little bit. This is a new edition, this movie, right? And we did see a clip during the meeting. The information and the presentation seemed much more applicable, and I think it'll be something that parents will be able to look at and say, hey, yeah, this is going on. This is the impact. So we're going to share that, and the date, I believe, is March 19th. Did you share with me that it'll be March 19th? So it'll be shown here at that time. So that's pretty much where we were for Community Relations. There was a lot that was covered, and you can see the minutes that are attached, that were attached in this week's board memo. Does anybody have any questions on Community Relations? Okay, thank you. Right, moving on to Town DeBello for Finance.
Finance Committee met February 11th at the district office. We went through the executive reports, starting off. We have $111 million cash on hand. That makes up all the reserve accounts and everything else that we have. Revenues are on mark and trending ahead of plan. Expenditures are generally in line and monthly budget plan overall, so we're looking good as far as expenses are concerned. Assessments are up by $4 million. Year-to-date is $45 million, and we're on track to achieve our forecast goal of $4.099 billion, although I hope we hit the $4.1 billion. Real estate transfer taxes are at 89% goal. Our target for the year is, we're looking at about $2.2 million average gain. We are estimating our earned income taxes to exceed budget. We're going to come in somewhere around $10.5 to $10.9 million. Their self-funded insurance costs are starting to level off. If you remember, last few months, we were talking about we were seeing a little uptake in the claims, but we're starting to see that level off, so hopefully we'll be back on budget. Food services, we see our breakfast sales are up to about 300 per day. Our year-to-date is 22,000. Total lunch sales are basically 290,000 a year-to-date, up 10,000 from the prior year. So we're liking the way things are progressing forward with the changes that we made. We got into the budget update. There wasn't a whole lot of conversation at this point. Mr. Fink and his team are working with each of the departments, schools, and groups, and putting together the budget books, and we will be diving into this with both feet in March, getting prepared to have our budget, staying on our budget calendar. We may be having an extra finance meeting in March to focus solely on the budget, but we'll see how the first meeting goes. And the only other thing we talked about was, as Linda mentioned, that the band uniforms for the middle school is going to cost about $80,000, $90,000. The question came up how it was being paid for at curriculum, and they said that they're going to take $10,000 a year out of their already budgeted $65,000. And my question was, were we taking $10,000, what is being impacted? And my recommendation was is that we don't reduce the middle school budget, music portion of their budget by $10,000 and see... music portion of their budget by $10,000 and see where that money would come from. All of it's going to come out of cap reserve, but it was really taking money out of the budget, the middle school music budget each year of $10,000. Mr. Fink was going to look into that, and we're going to discuss that at the next finance meeting and roll that into the budget conversation. Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for that. Not necessarily a question, but a thank you to Christina also for sharing during this time what Governor Wolf's proposed budget would be and the impact that that could potentially be to us, underwhelming at best. But did you want to comment on that at all?
Yeah, I mean, at this time appropriations committees in both the House and Senate are really going through their hearings. So they're meeting with the various departments and members and committees and trying to evaluate the governor's proposal and then take a look. And then there'll be new proposals and bills and amendment to a bill and something. And eventually, we will have a budget, but we're a long way from kind of what the final look will be.
There's still time, right?
So there's still a lot to be done, very similar to where we are with our budget at this time.
Well, thank you. And Clinton Jackson, property?
Good evening. There was a property meeting held on February 11th. Some of the major items of discussion, one particularly being the high school expansion project. The elevator's in place. It's been signed off by the state. There was also discussion with change orders from the previous month and the next steps for closing the project out. And I'd like to give Mr. Hunter a major attaboy for seeing this through to completion. There was also discussions regarding the demographics enrollment study update. ICS consulting will present to the administration on March 5th. There's also the intent of ICS presenting to the property committee on March 11th. There was also discussion regarding implementing a new initiative with reoccurring paint schedules for the entire school district. There was discussions regarding the feasibility to expand the high school cafeteria and the teacher's dining room to support possibly 100 additional seats for student growth while maintaining the three lunch periods. Also, there was discussion regarding Governor Wolf's proposed grant funding that is available for PA schools regarding asbestos cleanup and how Springfield could benefit from that. Under school police and emergency management, we're looking at deployment of 400 digital radios around the end of February. There are five action items for the board to consider. Limerick Fireline replacement project, the Brook classroom heat pump replacement, equipment only. The Brook classroom heat pump replacement labor to install. A camera replacement, one camera replacement, the high school additional camera at the Flex for approval, and Lieutenant Phillips to attend an FBI leadership training. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Rizzo for assistant superintendent?
Yep, thank you. Just a few updates. The Pennsylvania Student Assistance Program, SAPTEAMS, is a systematic team process used to mobilize school resources to remove barriers to learning. SAP is designed to assist in identifying issues, including alcohol, tobacco, other drugs, and mental health issues which pose a barrier to a student's success. The primary goal of the SAP teams is to help students overcome these barriers. At the conclusion of this week, I'm very proud to say that we will have completed training and will begin planning to have fully implemented SAP teams in all 11 of our Springfield buildings. Next, the polar plunge. On December 13th, a little bit old, but on December 13th, Springfield participated in our first-ever polar plunge. Proceeds from the polar plunge benefit the athletes of Special Olympics in Pennsylvania. Taken from the Special Olympics PA website, they comment, "The coldest moment of your life will support the biggest moment of theirs. The crowd will be huge, the cause great, and the water freezing. But we don't do it because it's easy. We do it because we make a difference." Thanks goes out to Dr. Collier, Dr. Coller, Mr. Krakauer, Mrs. Jeanette Walker, and two students for going all in for a great cause in representing Springfield. Got just a little clip of a video for you to see. It was a good time, but it was a cold time. Cotton Yacht, high school educators, Alain Purdy and Susie Hammond, worked tirelessly with the Resiliency students and Avetam students to increase student leadership skills, social and emotional well-being, team-building skills, acceptance, and positive relationships. They are the teachers that create the team-building exercises that bookend our QPR training. During physical education classes this week, Ms. Purdy and Mrs. Hammond are conducting their follow-up team-building exercises. Administrators and board members are encouraged to stop by the high schools and check it out. In the image displayed, oh, go back. There we go, thanks. In the image displayed, you see Ms. Purdy and Mrs. Hammond with Mrs. Rebecca Smith during the Avetam self-care night that was held on Friday, January 31st, 2020. Student Spotlight, Eden Castillo. This month's student spotlight is Eden. He is a 16-year-old junior broadcast major at Springfield. Eden's Springfield career started at Evans Elementary. He has one older sister who is a senior this year. Eden's areas of accelerated study include AP language and composition, dual credit communications, and honors history. Some highlights from 2019 include developing a post-cast called PSRN Philly Sports Report Nation with a few of his friends, which was nominated for Best Minor Music Video in the Phoenixville Film Festival. Eden's involvement and influence can be heard through Rampage, our high school newspaper, as well as the RCTV program. Eden plans to pursue a communications degree after graduation in 2021. He has been selected to receive the High School Leadership Award. If he chooses to enroll at Widener University as an undergraduate, he will take part in the prestigious Apogee Leadership Scholarship Program and receive a $20,000 scholarship over four years. Upcoming events, the Future Planning Center is still looking for Career Month speakers for the month of March. If you have any family or friends that have really cool jobs and you think they would be comfortable talking to a group of teenagers about it, send them to the Future Planning Center. Speakers can be scheduled for any day in the month of March, either before or after lunch. And lastly, let's not forget the Senior High School Musical, 42nd Street, that will be on March 6th and March 7th. So come out and check it out. It's going to be a great show. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rizzo?
There was two other exciting things that happened this past month as well. The boys' wrestling won the PAC championship, which I mentioned, and also the girls' basketball team won the PAC championship. So big month for Springfield. And I just was reading earlier that there was, some organization ranked the best girls' high school softball teams in the United States by state, and there was one per state that was ranked. And the Springfield girls' high school softball team was ranked for Pennsylvania as being the top softball team in the state. So Springfield is, once again, continually getting on the map, both locally, regionally, and nationally.
Okay, moving on to our solicitors report. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, good evening. A couple of relatively brief updates. I had mentioned, I believe, at our last meeting in January that we had received notice from the Independence Law Center with regard to Student Expression Policy 219. There wasn't a policy update tonight, so I just wanted to note for our purposes that that policy will be coming back with some revisions to be consistent with, frankly, where case law has come from over the last several years. So that's going to be up, I believe, for a first reading next week, if I'm not mistaken. So I wanted to note that. The other issue, and maybe it's just me, but over the last month, I've been receiving a number of emails from a prolific right-to-know requester, Simon Campbell. I don't know if that is an email he's sending to everybody, but I know that in many districts, these emails are coming. I sense, we haven't heard from him in a number of months, but I would not be surprised if we are going to start seeing a ramp up again in right-to-know requests from Mr. Campbell under the circumstances. And for new board members, Mr. Campbell has sued and been sued by the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and part of his battle with them has also included a number of right-to-know requests of the school districts that participate in PSBA. Earlier, there were a number of requests with regard to information regarding unions and the like. So I wouldn't be shocked if we start seeing those requests again. So that's just to put you on notice of what I anticipate coming in the year 2020.
We got emails from him last year, I think.
He comes and goes. Sometimes he just wants to say hello. Other times, it's a legitimate request. I suspect requests might be coming.
Do you expect that he's going to request from us individually?
Well, no. I mean, the requests would come to the entity, to the school district. However, there are times that the requests then would require information from individual board members. That's why I think it's important just to keep you apprised of those facts. Right-to-know requests are always sent to the entity, but certainly could implicate individual board members.
Mr. Fitzgerald, you made one statement, and you said legitimate requests. They're not legitimate requests. I could come up with another name of legitimate. But I wouldn't classify as legitimate.
I would, I will concur with that. Yes, many of them are illegitimate under the circumstances. Some, though, have to be complied with based on the request.
We have to comply with them, but they're just... And I actually talked to a couple of state legislators about re-looking at that whole right-to-know thing because of this, and I use this as an example, where because the law, there was reasons why something like that was put in place, but then it becomes like somebody's taken advantage of, and what's the end game? Because we, as a district, when we get these, and we know that they're just whatever you... Like I said, they're not legitimate. I'll just use a different word. But it takes a lot of time, effort, and money to respond to these.
I know that, and I don't have the figure, but I believe about three or four years ago, the state wanted to get a study of just what the cost impact the law has had on local, state, and municipal governments.
Because there are times for a legitimate right-to-know, but not these.
But at the end of the day, he has the right to do that.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Earl, they didn't tell you this when you were sworn in about this? I'll take that as a no.
Don't worry, the settlements that we have to pay, we'll just take it weekly. Yeah.
Just take a percentage. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Any questions on the Minutes A and B? Personnel, A through E. Finance, A through H. Property, A through D. Programming and Curriculum, A through D. Conferences and Workshops, A through E.
I have a question about A. I just wanted a little bit more information about it.
What I'll do, I was looking at what I put in the weekly memo last week. I'll put more information in there. I was looking at the website. I'm familiar with this company, with this group. They're called the Flippin Group. And it was started by a gentleman named Flippin, believe it or not. But what he does is he works with schools, and he really, the program, the best that I can determine, impacts the totality of school culture, not only how students behave and how the expectations for their behavior, but also how adults interact with those students. And the program is really more prominent in the western part of the United States, west of the Mississippi River. We don't have a lot of, they don't have a lot of presence in the eastern part of the United States. I'm familiar with the group because I've worked with them as part of my work with the superintendents group that I attend each year. So while I can get information about the program, and I'll put some more information in the weekly memo, we were, in my discussions with them, I'd really like to know in depth what this is, how it works, what's it look like. And so when talking to one of their reps, they were able to offer us a scholarship to send somebody out to take a look at the program. So I thought, okay, well, it is an expensive program. It's a multi-year project, so it's not something that I want to enter into lightly or haphazardly. So they were willing to allow us to send one person out to their introductory training, if you will, and to take a look at that before we go any further. So I said, okay, well, let's see if the board's interested in us looking at this particular program. And I thought I'd send Mr. Rizzo out. He agreed to go out. I twisted his arm a little bit to go out, but to sit through that for a couple of days and bring it back, bring back more of a recommendation, is this something we really want to look at for the district? I would say that if we were to go down this route, we'd be on the school district in Pennsylvania or our region that would be going down this road. But I will, in looking at what I put in last week, I'll put some more information in, some more bullet points about what I can find. But I really feel that for me to make a recommendation to the board, I need to have better information other than what they've got on their website. And so I thought, well, if they're going to pay the registration, maybe we're willing to send somebody out. So that's why I put that on there.
But Dr. Gooden, what are we going to learn by going out there versus having conversations with them?
Conversations with them?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a...
I've already had conversations with them. And I don't have enough from those conversations to really say, this is the program. This is what we want to do. This is the direction we want to go. You know, it's too general, the information that I'm able to glean from those folks. And like I said, I've been listening to their presentations for several years, but it's not, it doesn't tell me what exactly they're doing. So, yeah, for me to pursue this, I'd want to know more.
So we need to fly somebody out there to obtain that information?
Go through a two-day training, yes.
But you said this is only on the West Coast, right?
Yeah, they don't have a strong presence on the East Coast.
So if we move forward with this, we guys are going to be spending a lot of money on travel because everything's on the West Coast?
No. No, they would come to us to train, but we've got to sign on first. In other words, they would bring their folks out here and do all the work out here with us in-house. We would not be going out there. I see what you're questioning. But no, the reason I'm sending them out there, so they don't have trainings over here. They have trainings out there. That's where their presence is strongest. And they certainly would like to be out here on the West Coast or the East Coast. But I thought we'd send them out there if we could to make a better determination as to whether or not this is something we want to pursue.
Yeah, I mean, I would take a free trip to California also, but...
Well, I don't know. I don't know about you, but I don't like traveling. I don't like the hassle. I don't like, it's not a fun thing to do. But if, you know, like I said, I talk to Mr. Rizzo. He's willing to do it. So if the board wants to have him bring back some information about this program, I certainly would like to have more information about it. That's great. If not, then we'll move on.
Yeah, I'm just stuck on having to travel to obtain information, but I'll leave it at that for now. The only question I have is when you look at $1,600, I think we're a little shy on that. I don't think you're going to go to California for four days for $1,600. But did we look into that?
Yes, sir, we did.
And Sacramento? How much? The hotel rooms are like $200.
No, we would get the hotel room through that company.
Oh, okay, because it says lodging here.
Yeah, lodging.
So you're just paying for transportation and meals?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Hold on, no, no, hold on. Let me, no, we're paying, we're paying nights lodging, but it's through the, in other words, we're getting their rate. In other words, we're paying $110 a night.
I am so sorry. I did not mean to do that. Didn't even know what that button was for.
So then it's $110 a night, so that's four nights, right? Three nights?
Yes, three nights, yeah.
Okay, and then the plane ticket?
About $500. About $500. Yeah, we had, you know, we just checked real quick. So my guess is we've overestimated the cost, but I didn't want to come back to the board.
Yeah, when I just saw the lodging, I thought that was light, but if you're getting at $100 a night, then it's different.
My only question about this, since we paused on it here, but, and I don't know what the solution would be, but to me, this is not necessarily a workshop, per se. It's more exploratory for a program that we're investigating?
No, it's their initial training that they're putting on, but we're just jumping in just to get a better idea of what exactly it is.
But the end game would be us sort of acquiring in a deeper capacity. If he comes back really excited about this, right? I mean, so it's, and that would fall underneath, I'm sure, a committee to sort of review what this program would be, right?
Yeah, we would run it through the curriculum committee.
Yeah.
Because it would really impact, it would really impact the way we teach and how we interact with students, as well as the students themselves.
I'm just curious, Dr. Murray, are you familiar with this at all? I know Mrs. Fazini's report earlier was that social emotional learning is being embedded into kind of all of the programming, so this seems to be very closely aligned to some, maybe of some of the work you're doing. Are we duplicating? Are we kind of getting, doing the work you're doing and then kind of a new animal? Or is this, would these work off of one another?
Let me speak to it first, and if you have further questions, we can have Dr. Murray. Social emotional learning is my goal this year. I work with Dr. Murray because social emotional learning isn't just something extra that we do. It's something that's embedded in everything we do, and it has a strong presence in curriculum and technology, has a strong presence in SAP and all that we do. So while I'm project lead on that, and we do have a social emotional learning subcommittee or district-wide committee that meets, in fact, we're meeting again this Friday. We also have a coaching team that is based in all 11 of our buildings. So we're in the planning phases right now anyway, so we're moving forward. What we're looking to see is, does what the Flippin Group bring, support what we want to do and what can we bring back? So whether we choose to use the Flippin Group or not, I'm going to go through two days of training with them and bring back and share with the social emotional learning committee anyway. And if we don't go, social emotional learning is still alive and well, and going to move forward here at Springfield, whether we use a Flippin Group or not. It's an opportunity for us to get a little bit of training and learn a little more about what they're doing. But Dr. Murray and I talk regularly about what SEL looks like curriculum-wise, in the classroom, instructional-wise, so.
And I just wanted to make sure we weren't kind of, from a curriculum perspective, kind of going this way and then kind of bringing this new initiative that was going to take us in different direction?
Sure. And Dr. Murray, Dr. Gooden, I have been in conversation about this. This isn't a new thing for her to hear about.
But normally, if you want to implement a new program, you're trying to compensate for a deficiency. So what would be the, I mean, do we have deficiencies that we think this program would improve?
SEL in general or what the Flippin Group offers? I can't speak to what the Flippin Group offers just yet, but what I can say as far as SEL is concerned, yes, we have some deficiencies right now. We are doing some really good things. We have, if I did a board memo about what SEL currently looks like in Springfield, but what we don't have is a consistent K-12 adoption of a plan, a framework, and implementation at the classroom level, in every classroom, across every building, across our district. So there's some growth to be done. Great things happening, but we're looking to pull it all together into a nice package that's comprehensive enough that our students get their needs met.
And there's no other programs or the companies on the East Coast? That's a trick question. But there's nothing on the East Coast?
Well, we're, yes, there are.
Well, I would go, I'd go as far, SEL is the hot topic right now.
That's my point.
Everybody's doing hot topic, but, you know, doing this hot topic, but the Flippin Group has been around, certainly before I got here, they were working with the superintendents in the group that I've been a part of for about 10 years now. So I've been familiar with them, but I've never thought enough, I've never thought to really look at bringing them in until social emotional learning became an emphasis in the district. And so, and as Mr. Rizzo said, we've got lots of different, we've got pieces all over the place of different things we're doing, but we don't have a district-wide framework for social emotional learning. And that's really what we're looking for. We don't have a framework for, that helps teachers understand how to interact with students to promote social emotional learning, and certainly, you know, we're looking for that kind of a framework.
Okay.
Dr. Murray, you were cut off. Is there anything you wanted to add to this?
No, I don't think so. I just wanted to support what Mr. Rizzo said in that we've spoken quite a bit about this, to look for the connection, to make sure that it was fluid and seamless. And I don't think it's uncommon for us, before bringing in any type of professional development, to participate in that ourselves as well. So you can really get a feel for the presenters, get a feel for what our teachers would experience. So the first time we're not seeing it would be with our teachers, it would be ahead of time. So I think, again, it's just something that we have been all in board with talking about ahead of time, and I think that there's certainly a connection between what Mr. Rizzo said and what we were looking at with their curriculum.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you all for your comments. I apologize for the button. Okay. Other business, A and B. Those are the policies that I referenced earlier quickly. Any questions? Okay, moving on to board comment.
E. I'm sorry.
Okay, we're backing up from board comment.
Yes. Melissa, is she a special needs teacher? On the E?
Yes.
Yes. This directly aligns with what, last month, we had a discussion about what conferences we should and should not be considering approving. So we've looked, every conference now, we're looking through with a very scrutiny aside. It ties directly to either A, their position, or B, a district initiative.
I highly support that.
Me too. I like that also. Okay, now, other business, A and B. Any questions? Okay, board comment?
One, I think I know the answer to my question, but we're in the latter part of the year for the seniors, and I have a senior that lives in my house. And I've heard much discussions about the senior skip days. So just allow me to sleep at nights, don't have to worry about this. We're not endorsing, as administration, any senior skip days, correct?
No. Unequivocally, no.
Just wanted to hear for the record. All right, thank you.
Sorry, Juliana.
Okay, as a second board comment, Mr. DeVella had brought up a couple of, I guess the last time we were together, about looking at a couple of different topics. And one of them that I wanted to bring out to the forefront for people tonight is the later start time issue. There was a piece done in our board memo about the ideology or thoughts behind sleep and teenagers, and also the impact to the district, and a survey. So I would like to ask the board to give administration direction to circulate that survey, and let's get some responses on paper.
Where'd the survey come from?
We put it together ourselves.
And that, going to recommend is that we, that should have, I thought we were going through, establishing a process, if we're going to, is that going to go through curriculum, and then curriculum's going to come with a recommendation? Or are we just directing administration to run with this survey? What's the plan?
Um.
Because, again, I mean, I don't want to go from, I brought up something last month, and now we're just going to like run, so let's throw the survey out. Like, what's the plan?
No, we're already in process.
No, no, no.
What would mean we were already in process?
No, no, no. Let me jump in here.
Right.
The whole idea of surveying is to, first of all, to gauge community support or, you know, non-support of us looking at later start times. But as far as, as far as, you know, going through curriculum or something like that, no, this has come off my desk. This is an issue that Mr. Rizzo and I went, am I answering your question? Am I not hearing your question?
No.
Okay, please ask.
All I'm asking is that, what is the process that we're going to follow with, we're just not going to throw a survey out there? What's the game plan? We're going to, what are we doing? What's, you know, I'm looking at plan, step one, step two, step three, step four. What are we doing? I'm not just saying, okay, we have this survey, we put it out in the board memo. Is everybody okay with it at the board table? Yeah, okay, throw it out to the parents.
Okay.
What's the communication that's going to go out prior to the survey? What's the communication going to go with the survey? What's the plan?
The survey itself is self-explanatory.
Okay, so.
You look at it, you get some information. I'm not sure what you're asking.
I know, go ahead.
And, you know, we're aware of this. The first step is to get some feedback from the community as to whether or not they even support us looking at something like this. And then what we do, if it comes back and, you know, 75% of the district wants us to look at later start times, and then you begin to pull together community stakeholders, have focus groups, begin looking at issues involved in doing later start times. And so this is a huge project, but the first step is getting some feedback. Now, if it comes back that five, only 5% support us doing this, then I'll bring that to the board and say, hey, listen, we did this survey, and only 5% of the community actually wants us to look at this. And then we have to decide, does the board want me to pursue this? Because it's a big initiative. Is it something that we continue working on, or is it something we just, that we just stopped working on? I don't want to spend a lot of time working on something that we have no interest in pursuing or that the community doesn't support. So what I want to do is just get an idea of where the community is on this topic.
Who are you surveying, and what list of participants are it?
It would be families. That would be our, that would, families that we serve.
Parents or just?
Parents, yes.
Just parents?
Yes.
So is that an accurate survey? If you're, I mean, other, what about taxpayers who aren't parents? Because I would think that the results of a, there's going to be some fiscal changes involved in changing the start of the school day and.
I don't think we're even there yet.
How would that impact tax, let's say, a family of two, who the kids have already gone through high school? How would that impact?
Well, wouldn't, I mean, if this is going to impact the school budget, it would impact their taxes.
Yeah, that's a given.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everything we do affects taxes, though. You can't.
Well, if I'm understanding what you're asking correctly, which I'm not sure that I am, so we would send the survey out to our parents that we have in our system, and then, then the survey could have a link on our website that anybody else could weigh in on it as well. But we don't even know what the taste is in the community for us to even pursue this. Is this something that the community is concerned about? Is this, I mean, we've had a couple of people come up to the board meeting and ask about this, and so we thought we'd put together, and I'm following, other districts have done the same thing. They launched this project by looking at it, taking an initial survey of community interest in even pursuing this. And if it comes, you know, if it comes back that, if I come back and say, you know, like Owen J. Roberts, only 11% of the parents are interested in this, even at the beginning of the process, it didn't change. They went through three years of looking at later start times, and their pre-survey and post-survey showed no change in community support for this. And so I don't want to spend three years working on something that the community will shoot down. So that was the idea, to start off with the survey.
Dr. Gooden, I think we have a snapshot of this. I can remember last year, we had a couple of parents, the same parents, and I think I could count them on both hands. So I mean, I think we have an idea of the concerns based on the parents that have showed up.
Right.
I mean, I support you as far as issuing a survey so we get a better picture and we make a decision based on those results.
And I think it's a continuation of our, when I say it's a continuation or something we've worked on, we had discussions about this at the town hall meeting last year, and the results were pretty insignificant, but then again, it was the people that were there in attendance. So this is more of a widespread, more of a, I don't want to say global to the district, but it is more of an opportunity for people to express their opinion. And then we either go forward and start down that road of the process, or we say, you know, it's just not for us right now.
I have a question.
But it gives us, I think, a bigger picture.
Excuse me. How much information educationally and, in fact, research, are we going to provide the parents with the survey? You know, there are a lot of parents that have studied this, attended symposiums on this, and then there's a lot of public out there that does not understand both sides of this question and the impact. So I'm hoping, and I'm sure you've thought of this, is providing some information before they answer survey questions.
And that's true, and some of that falls on the responsibility to be educated on that topic, I believe, that that's the responsibility of the individual. But Dr. Gooden has put a synopsis, I guess I would call it, of the facts that have been presented to us.
Okay.
And has shared that information.
Yeah, if you follow the link from the board memo to the survey, you'll see. I mean, it's a lot of information on what the whole objective and issues and the whole thing, and then a few questions, just, do you support it or not, or?
Okay, I'll go to the link.
Okay.
Look at how many people we have in the audience.
Well, real quick, back to Tom's comment, though, you know, so obviously, the initial, the initial thought would be to get some input from our community, bring it back to the board, and if the board wants me to pursue this, then we start working on educating the community, educating, educating our students on sleep issues, sleep deprivation issues, and then looking at possible solutions to that, one of which is later start time. And we have to make that decision as to whether or not that's something we want to pursue and you want to have us spending our time looking at, because it's going to be a huge, we're going to have to have stakeholder meetings with communities, we're going to have to look at all the issues, all the impact in the district of a later start time. So we've got to start somewhere if we're going to, if we're going to even pursue this. Or we could just sit here and just, as a board, say, we're not interested, drop it, and we'll move on.
So that was all wonderful conversation.
Did I answer your question?
No. You did good, but you didn't answer my question.
I think you did.
No, you didn't. If you're going to go out and survey 8,000 parents, you need to have a well-thought-out strategy, a plan, communication, how long is the survey going to run? What's the expected results that you're trying to get to, the percentage of return? If you want to fill this next meeting up or whenever this thing rolls out, then just take the survey and throw it out there and then see what happens. All I'm saying is that we, again, this is what I was afraid of when I brought this up last month. I'm not saying that let's just jump into it and send a survey. All I'm saying is let's make sure we're thinking through, because, again, when did you put that in the board memo for survey questions?
Two weeks ago.
Okay, did anybody ask you anything?
I didn't.
Yes.
One person?
Yes.
Out of nine board members? So that itself is concerning. This is, I mean, you have, we have to understand that when this, look what happens when the silliest things start rolling in social media and how, look at what happened with the school calendar, the misinformation and the rumors and all the craziness that went on. We, I'm saying, again, I'm just one person, I'm just saying that we need to think through and have a well orchestrated plan on how this is all going to come together, not just throw a survey out there and then say, okay, well, now, based on the survey results, this is what we're going to, this is what we should and shouldn't do.
Actually.
That's not what I'm saying.
Actually, the survey is structured in such a way that it's asking parents whether or not they would be interested in the district pursuing such a topic to explore.
I understand that, but again, I'm just.
Actually, Dr. Gooden.
Knock yourselves out. Just remember, I brought this up.
You just very eloquently stated that, you know, this is a total process, and it's educating our students, it's just educating our families and our community, and there are a number of different ways that sleep deprivation can be addressed, one of which is this. And I think I'm more on the side of, let's start the.
And I, I think I'm more on the side of, let's start the process of educating our students, let's start the process of educating our families and our community, let's start down that path. This is one solution, but there are many others. So let's start identifying what all, not all, obviously, but, you know, a good number of solutions that we can begin to implement here at the school, that we can send information home to our families, and that we can begin to work collaboratively with our community to address the sleep deprivation concerns with our adolescents. Part of that, then, as we begin to establish that framework, that knowledge base, that understanding, then we can take a look at, now does it make sense for us to look at changing start times? And I think then we're having a more informed conversation with our community members, who then have, have a better ability to say, yeah, I support it, or no, I don't, and they'll have good rationale, and they'll have, you know, good, good information. So that, that to me would be the first step, is to begin that educational process.
Ms. Melton, what do you think we're going to tell them that they don't already know? I mean, if you look at the demographics of this area, it's a fairly well-educated demographics here, and I just don't know what, you know, do we really want to get into the, into the arena of telling parents what they should be doing? I, I just don't think it's that complicated. I just, I really don't. I mean, I have, I have two kids in the district, so I look at my kids, a 16-year-old and 18-year-old, and, you know, they know they have to get up and go to school the next morning, and, you know, they follow that protocol. I guess we know what we're going to tell parents that, honestly, what are, what are we going to tell them that they don't already know?
I just want to add to that a little bit, too. We've had public meetings where the people have come in and they've talked to us, where people can access that information, whether they're here, or online, or what have you, if they don't already know it, right? We had the town hall meeting where the information was presented. There's a brief synopsis here of information. I think at a certain point, you know, the information is there, and it is an obligation or responsibility of, of the person that, if they need to know more, to go get it. You know, there's the information highway out there, there's no shortage of resources or, or information for that. I would agree, though, with, with Clinton a little bit on that, that, I don't know, we, we can tell people, you know, take the phones away, the kids have to go to bed, it's up to them to do it. And, and that's fine if they do, and it's fine if they don't, but there's consequences either way. I think that we've already kind of started down this road. We've identified that sleep deprivation is an issue, and how.
No, we didn't.
Well.
No, we didn't.
We did not.
We did not. We did not.
We did not decide, decide it was an issue at Springford. We acknowledge that there's discussion about it in our culture, if, if something has to be addressed that way. It's time to, I think, as you said last week, or last month, it's time that we look at it, and we do something, or we put it to rest. What are we going to do here with this? But I do agree with the survey and the undertaking, yes, I think you did a nice job of putting this together. How are we going to collect the data and analyze the data, so we do get a clear picture of what is needed in our district? That would be my question.
And I guess, Mrs. Zazowski, I'd like to just respond. My concern is twofold, one of which is, yeah, there is a lot of information out there, and folks may not really be pursuing it, but if we provide that educational element, if we do it once, if we do it twice, if it's an, if it's a newsletter home, if it's a link, if it's an identification and an acknowledgement, then I think that that's important, that we share that information with our community. So that's number one. Number two, I think that this is a very short-sighted conversation, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. Right now, what you're talking about is, do we start early, or do we not start early? We're not talking about the health of our students. I want to talk about the health of our students. There is not a single answer that is going to be the answer. There are going to be a number of answers that are going to have to work together, just like with social emotional learning. I mean, it's, it's complex, and it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, and we need to look beyond just the start times. We need to look at whether phys ed first period makes a difference. We need to look at what about, you know, sugar intake or caffeine? I mean, this is a big topic, and it is the health of our students. Start times is only one element that will address it. We need to know more. And I'm not ready to, to, to go down any road to change start times, or, you know, until we have a better understanding of what the different elements are that are going to impact our students' productivity and performance and success.
So.
And sleep time is not the only one.
So this was, this, you all are proving my point, and you might not realize it, but you're proving my point. Christina, I agree with what you're saying. I don't know about the sugar intake. Sugar's good.
I'll lay in your coffee.
That's right. But the point that I was trying to, and I, that's why I said, does it go through committee? We need to, to think through everything and how we're going to wrap this up. This is, and then we got to roll out our strategy and plan of action, and at some point in there, yes, there could be a survey that will go out to the parents, and what's our goal? Right? What's our goal? But just us throwing the survey, and again, just this conversation right now demonstrates that we need to have a board conversation in-depth about this, or through committee, or whatever it may be, but. No, I mean, you guys are carrying a conversation behind me, so.
No, no, sorry.
Whatever. So, let's put this, let's end it now, and, and figure out how we want to, at a board meeting, as a discussion item or what, but let's just end this now, tonight.
Can I?
Because it's just a comment section.
Trying to say. I totally agree with Christina, and Tom, I partially agree with, yes, we need a thorough action plan, and it may have a couple steps. But parents may be aware, and I've talked to a lot of people because of my background on this, they understand it is an issue. They don't understand the complexity of this issue. This is a medical, scientific, health-of-our-children issue. It's not just a matter of having a bus run later, or implications or complications. And a lot of people out there don't understand why this is an issue. And I think, and it's not, you're, you're absolutely right, Colleen, it's not our responsibility to educate the public. But in this survey, we may give them some site or resources to go to, to kind of, you know, please, read these, you know, be informed before completing the survey, something to that line. I understand the wording is not right. But it's, it's more than just a social issue. This is a developmental, medical, scientific issue.
Okay, well, I, I thank everyone for their comments, and, you know, there are a lot of different places that we're coming from, so I appreciate all of that feedback. And I think that at this point, we will cut it off in board comment, but would ask for it to be, how would we do that, Mr. Fitzgerald? Have that as, as part of a?
It's not Mr. Fitzgerald. It's not Mr. Fitzgerald. We could, we could either have a discussion item here as a board, we could have another meeting that's advertised to the community that this is solely, this is what the board's going to be talking about, or we could plan some type of board retreat. Yes.
Okay, so, we'll go with board retreat, if everyone would be in favor of that, since we had discussed that earlier this year preliminarily, or?
If I may, just before you wrap up, the, so here, and again, this, I'm sure started, this conversation started prior to me joining the board this go-around. And so forgive me if I'm missing some of the, but the board meetings that I attended, I don't recall this being something. What I, what I love to hear is that administration says, either A, we have a problem, or B, we have an opportunity to create a significant improvement. And then administration says, here's our plan that we want to go forward, that would thoroughly investigate. And then, at that point, we will bring a recommendation to the board. And it, to me, I'm not hearing that, and again, please forgive me if it were, if this was a board conversation, or if it came up, it, it seems like we're discussing a potential solution without clearly identifying the problem. And that's, that's backwards for me. So, I mean, you know, if, if I were to be asked, do we have a, a problem? I haven't heard it from administration, so therefore, we're sort of just pontificating here around something. But I'm serving here to, you know, weigh in on things that, you know, come from experts and not just sort of hearsay or perception. And so, that would be my comment on this. If, if it is something that we need to retreat or talk about further, I'd certainly be willing to participate in that, obviously. I just don't, I don't know that, I've heard that this is a problem, or it is an opportunity for significant improvement.
The, the administration has not come to us and said, this is a problem. You've had parents come up, this is a common trend in conversation throughout the country. You know, and, and my question is, we can implement a lot of things, we don't control the final results. And we got to remember that. We, we can implement, but we don't control the final results of how the parents are going to deal with this with their kids. I hear Ms. Sullivan talk about, you know, the, the medical side of it. That's something that we can't get involved in. We do, we can't.
What would you share then?
It's not our job. But yeah, that's, I mean, as Mrs. DeBella said, that's not our position to do that. Like, we can change the time, but the impact of the kids going to sleep, putting their phones down, waking up when they're supposed to, we have no control of that. And something I've asked various school districts, tell me how you're measuring success. And to this day, I've never got a response on that. So this is a much, this is a very broad item that we can only address part of it. I don't, I don't know how we address the final results and measure some sort of metric to say, yes, we've done this, and it's, and it's successful. And I've talked to other school districts who've implemented this, and now I ask that question, how do you measure success? They can't.
So Dave, the, I mean, you raised, I'm, I'm, kind of, that's what I'm trying to get to as well, but the, the piece that you left out is, we're dealing with a cultural swing right now across the country. So the, from the previous, our, from the previous board, and what's rippling into this board, is we have to take a position, one way or the other. We have to take a position, and that position has to be an educated position. And that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to get us to take a position, and I'm, and when we take that position, we have to be able to say, this is why the Springford Area School District School Board, not administration, because it's going to become a school board, this is our position, and here's why. And there's a whole series of things that we need to do, and the survey is one piece of that, and we have to take that position. And within this retreat, or however we play this thing out, there may be things, other topics that are come up that the district, that through administration would say, you know what, we do have a problem here, and this is our recommendation that we should address this. We do have a problem there, and this is our recommendation how to address it. But right now, we're talking about cultural swing. You know, when you have states like, like California, for instance, they, they created a state law that no school could start before 8:30, right? And it's all based on a whole bunch of studies, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into who's right and who's wrong. That's not, I'm not saying that. You know, everyone has their own feelings on that. All I'm saying is that as a school board, we need to take a position, this is the reason why we're taking our position, and as a board, we need to live with that position. And maybe five years from now, that position's revisited, I don't know. But that's, that's all I'm trying to drive towards.
All right, well, there's been a lot of early talk, and we'll continue that in a retreat. I will talk with Dr. Gooden and Diane Fern, and get an email out with some new dates to talk about that board retreat, which this will be a hot topic there, and then we'll.
It'll be the only topic.
It will be the only topic, and then we will move forward with that. Public to be heard?
Wait a minute, I have another board comment.
Oh, boy, okay.
This is a real, real fast comment. I'm, I, I, we have excellent student reps. I'm starting to get a little, I don't understand, the whole point of having two was to have two at the meetings, not for yous to trade back and forth, so I'm not really understanding what the thought process is. But that's, if that's what it's going to become, then there's no point in us having two student reps. And you don't have to answer that question, but I'm just putting.
Okay, we'll try for, for two next week. And, any other board comment?
That's for.
Public to be heard? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.